Thank you for taking invitation.
Wassabid al-Qurbi. Alfinin. Wassalamu'ala. Khair Khelki. Muhammadin. Wassalamu'ala. Wa sallam. Subhanahu Rabbika. Rabbina 'adhi. Satiyaa. Maaysi. U. Wassalamu'ala. Amrusin. Alhamdulillah.
Alhamdulillah. Please remain standing for the singing of the national anthem to be followed by the bangsa moro.
Maga kamaian ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Kayang magiliw, kadas masira hanan. Alam ng puso, san itikoy buhay. Lupang binira, kuya ka ng mahiting. Sa manlupi, dikapasi sigil. Sanagadap, tutok sa si kuya, salami kong bawal. Ayunadap, tutla kawit sa pagkaya minamahal. Ang isda't napuha kawat, kuy na dun, ay naranatin iti. Ang pituin na paro, ya kayda, pamay di ba tiniti. Luwa na paraw, ngangwar, hati pa'singka. Kuy na mit sa piling ko. Amin ni kaya na pagkay ang amin. Ang pagkay ng kahil sa'yo. Simula on hanggang ngayon, isa ang naging lalong. Magka-isa at magulol, karitingan ay magugtong. Luwayon tayo, kulas sa hamon ang nakara. Diyamo sa paganib na buhan lang. Binagaku sa puso at paliriwala, ang ihawo para sa kabataan. Bangsa Moro ay tanun kay, mula ng pawis suwad buhay. Napayapan, kataguhan, ay atin ang nakantay. Alhaklilah, alhaklilah, pagpaday bangsa moro. Ang samor, bangsa moro, lagi kang mamahalig. Walang pipigil sa damdamin, mga pangako'y tutuparin. Ang buhay kami, sayo'y magpamantay, mananati sa puso't isipan. Ang kahapon humimpay nga, nagpuis ng buhay, nasapiling ka ng may kapal. Bangsa Moro ay tanun kay, mula ng pawis suwad buhay. Napayapan, kataguhan, ay atin ang nakantay. Alhaklilah, alhaklilah, pagpaday bangsa moro.
Unrabol minbiar subipaliamin. Abas Aknat. Abas Arun. Abbas Basit. Abu Mujib. Alamiya Laisa. Alaudin Musbir. Ali Ibrahim. Ali Lenang Junior. Ali Edi. Amboluto Suwarto. Aminudin Abdulaziz. Anayatin Susana. Antao Muhammad Kili. Arnado Mirian. Asnavidan. Babaw Ali Muntaha. Palindong Pangalian. Basman Ana Tarhata. Kandaw Bai Malihah.
Present po.
Dilangalin Hasimi. Lumama Al Basailiha. Ibrahim Ahud. Ismail Suwarto. Istino Matarul. Gayak Abdullah. Gira Edward. Haji Abdullah Khalid. Hasim Abdullah. Hasan Hakimil. Iqbal Mohagir. Ismail Rasul. Jajuri Raisa. Jakilan Muslimin. Jikiri Albakil. Kahalan Din Martin. Karun Faisal. Lim Jan Anthony. Luong Benjamin. Luong Don Mustafa. Lurina Husi. Makapaar Abdullah. Makasalong Marjani. Makatanung Amrusi. Maglangit Tarhata. Malik Hamid. Mantawil Bailing. Mastura Isak. Matalam Jaapar Apollo Mikail. Mawallil Emil Bahar. Mindosa Fruelin. Mittimbang Michael. Mittimbang Tawakal. Miswari Abdul Karim.
Present.
Miswari Norrida. Mitmog Rasul Junior. Munyo Susain. Oranon Swaeed. Pakasim Ubaidah. Pak Abdullah Habb. Pangandaman Nabila Margarita. Markasi Urandul. Piang Ramun Senior.
Present.
Ramos Djamila. Salinda Bisaid. Salik Ali. Sangki Ali. Sima Umar Yasir. Sima Rumio.
Present.
Sik Said. Silongan Aida. Sinulinding Kadeel Junior. Sulaiman Ali. Tagu Faisalin. Tan Nabil.
Present.
Usman Azpar. Utuk Basir. Uioyot Shififahani. Jakob Muhammad. Mister Speaker. Forty members of the parliament responded to the call. She been responded by a Zoom with a total of forty-seven. I therefore certify the presence of the courtroom.
By by the. Cada. They have declared. Present. For. Session resume. Our leader, what is your pleasure?
It is in the plenary. Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Mister Speaker, I move to amend the order of business to include. Proposed resolution number three six seven.
Wala pong ano, wala pong sound. Hindi ko naririnig si Majority Leader. Wala.
Same here, sir Nabil.
Same, walang audio. Wala ding sound.
Yes, pareho tayo, walang sound.
Please fill. Please reflect.
Ring. Sound. No. Sound. No. Oh. Yeah. Di pa rin marinay. Secret.
Gusto kanila 'yung rasa. Gusto kanila. That's so meeting.
There is a motion to amend today's order of business with this proposal. Number seven. Any second. There being objection, the motion is approved. The order of business is consequent.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. I move to dispense with the reading of Journal number eight of June twenty twenty. June twenty-two, twenty twenty-three session.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal of the previous session on June twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Any second. There being objection, the motion is approved.
I move to approve the journal of the previous session, Journal number eight of June twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to approve the journal of the previous session on June twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Been seconded, hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
There are five private member bills on first reading, Mister Speaker. May we request the secretariat to please read the title, the number, the title, the author and the co-authors.
One minute suspension. The secretariat is directed to read all bills on first reading, including the name of the names of the authors and co-authors.
BTA Parliament Bill number two hundred thirteen entitled. An Act Establishing a Supplemental Academic Learning Ameloration Program, SALAP, for disadvantaged learners appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Author member of the parliament, Don Mustafa Luong. Co-authors members of parliament, Laisa Alamiya, Baintan Ngapatuan, Rasul Mitmog Junior, Emil Bahar Mawallil, Suwarto Amboluto, Rasul Ismail, Benjamin Luong, Jaapar Apollo Mikail Matalam, Abdul Karim Miswari, Jose Lorena, Abdallah Jis Aminudin, Jamila Ramos, Azbar Usman, Muhammad Keli Antao, Edi Ali, Tawakal Mittimbang, Mujib Abu, Swaeed Oranon, Basir Utu. Bai Maleha Kandaw, Michael Mittimbang, Albakil Jikiri and Musbir Alaudin. BTA Parliament Bill number two hundred fourteen entitled. An Act Strengthening the System of Management and Archival Records of the Bangsa Moro Government. Establishing for the purpose the office of the Bangsa Moro Regional Archives and appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Author member of the parliament, Don Mustafa Luong. Co-authors members of parliament, Laisa Alamiya, Baintan Ngapatuan, Rasul Mitmog Junior, Emil Bahar Mawallil, Suwarto Amboluto, Rasul Ismail, Benjamin Luong, Jaapar Apollo Mikail Matalam, Abdul Karim Miswari, Jose Lorena, Abdallah Jis Aminudin, Jamila Ramos, Azbar Usman, Muhammad Keli Antao, Edi Ali, Tawakal Mittimbang, Mujib Abu, Swaeed Oranon, Basir Utu, Bai Maleha Kandaw, Michael Mittimbang, Basit Abbas, Muslimin Jakilan, Albakil Jikiri and Susana Anayatin. BTA Parliament Bill number two hundred fifteen entitled. An Act Establishing Indigenous Peoples' Community Centers in the Bangsa Moro Region and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Author member of the parliament, Don Mustafa Luong. Co-authors members of parliament, Laisa Alamiya, Baintan Ngapatuan. Rasul Mitmog Junior, Emil Bahar Mawallil, Suwarto Amboluto, Rasul Ismail, Benjamin Luong, Jaapar Apollo Mikail Matalam, Abdul Karim Miswari, Jose Lorena, Abdallah Jis Aminudin, Jamila Ramos, Azbar Usman, Muhammad Keli Antao, Edi Ali. Tawakal Mittimbang, Mujib Abu, Swaeed Oranon, Basir Utu, Bai Maleha Kandaw, Michael Mittimbang, Basit Abbas, Muslimin Jakilan and Albakil Jikiri. BTA Parliament Bill number two hundred sixteen entitled. An Act Declaring the Tom Sub Sultan Seriful Hasim in Barangay Buansa Municipality of Indanan Province of Sulu. A historical heritage site and ecotourism destination and appropriating funds therefore. Author member of the parliament, Don Mustafa Luong. Co-authors members of parliament, Laisa Alamiya, Baintan Ngapatuan, Rasul Mitmog Junior, Emil Bahar Mawallil, Suwarto Amboluto, Rasul Ismail, Benjamin Luong, Jaapar Apollo Mikail Matalam, Abdul Karim Miswari, Jose Lorena, Abdallah Jis Aminudin. Jamila Ramos, Azbar Usman, Muhammad Keli Antao, Edi Ali, Tawakal Mittimbang, Mujib Abu, Swaeed Oranon, Basir Utu, Bai Maleha Kandaw, Michael Mittimbang, Basit Abbas, Muslimin Jakilan and Albakil Jikiri. BTA Parliament Bill number two hundred seventeen entitled. An Act Declaring Kutawato Cave Located in Barangay Rosary Heights One, City of Kutawato, A Historical Heritage Site. Co-authors members of parliament, Laisa Alamiya, Baintan Ngapatuan, Rasul Mitmog Junior, Emil Bahar Mawallil, Suwarto Amboluto, Rasul Ismail, Benjamin Luong, Jaapar Apollo Mikail Matalam, Abdul Karim Miswari, Jose Lorena, Abdallah Jis Aminudin, Jamila Ramos, Azbar Usman, Muhammad Keli Antao, Edi Ali, Tawakal Mittimbang, Mujib Abu, Swaeed Oranon, Basir Utu, Bai Maleha Kandaw, Michael Mittimbang, Basit Abbas, Muslimin Jakilan and Susana Anayatin.
Please fill in the forms that have been provided to you and submit the same to the secretariat, Mister Speaker. We now proceed to the proposed resolutions, Mister Speaker. Starting with proposed resolution number one six four, may we request the secretariat to please read the title, the author and the co-authors.
The secretariat is directed to read the title of proposed resolution.
Proposed resolution. Number one hundred sixty-four entitled. Resolution urging the Bangsa Moro Economic and Development Council, BPC, through the Bangsa Moro Planning and Development Authority, BPDA, to prepare and submit a comprehensive performance report of the Bangsa Moro government to the national government covering the period twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two. Author member of the parliament, Baintan Ngapatuan. Co-authors members of parliament, Rasul Mitmog Junior, Emil Bahar Mawallil, Laisa Alamiya, Suwarto Amboluto, Don Mustafa Luong, Rasul Ismail, Khalid, Haji Abdawa, Jaapar Apollo Mikail Matalam, Basir Utu and Tawakal Mittimbang.
Proposed resolution number one six four to the committee and who been seconded. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Next, Mister Speaker, is proposed resolution number two zero three. May we request the secretariat.
Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker. Hindi maganda 'yung audio ng specialist sa mic ng Majority Leader.
Right now on what is available.
A technology that is available may be request that you bear with us while we are attempting to search.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Proposed resolution number two hundred three entitled. Resolution Appealing to the Ministry of Basic Higher and Technical Education, MBHSTE. Ministry of Social Services and Development, MSSD. Ministry of Science and Technology, MOSD. Appropriate Commissions and Other Proper Agencies with Scholarship Program. To allocate funds for scholarships to persons with disabilities, PWD. Single parents, widows, widowers and their children. Author members, authors members of parliament, Susana Anayatin and Norred Amiswari. Co-authors members of parliament, Bai Maleha Kandaw, Don Mustafa Luong, Shififahani, Uioyot, Abdallah Jis Aminudin, Suwarto Amboluto, Suwar, Abdawa Kapar, Rasul Ismail, Din Martin Kahalan, Aaron Abbas, Basit Abbas, Ali Muntaha Babaw, Jaapar Apollo Mikail.
Japara Apolo Mikael Matalam, Ramontiang Senior and Pasen Edilanggale.
203 to the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education and the Committee on Science and Technology.
There is a motion to refer Proposed Resolution No. 203 to the Committees on Basic Higher and Technical Education and to the Committee on Science and Technology. Any second, hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, up next is Proposed Resolution No. 279. May we request the Secretariat to please read the title, the author and the co-authors.
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of the next proposed resolution, including the name of the authors and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution No. 279, entitled "Resolution Urging the Government of the Day (GOTD) to Institute Preparatory Measures for the impending El Nino phenomenon." Author-member of the Parliament: Mahinta Nambatuhan. Co-authors-member of the Parliament: Emil Bahar Mawallil, Lysa Alamiya, Suwarto Angbuluto, Don Mustafa Loong, Rasool Mitmog Jr. and Rasool Ismail.
Mr. Speaker, I move to treat Proposed Resolution No. 279 as a simple resolution.
There is a motion to treat Proposed Resolution No. 279 as a simple resolution. It's been seconded. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
May we recognize the principal author, MP Mahinta Nambatuhan, Mr. Speaker?
Assalamualaikum wrak manor of him. Assalamualaikum wrak manor of him. Mr. Speaker, same colleagues in this August Parliament, gandang hapo po. Section 16, Article 2 of the Philippine Constitution provides that the state shall protect and advance the right of the people to a balanced and healthy ecology in accordance with the rhythm and harmony of the nature. The BOL, for German means that the Bangsa-Moro government shall exercise the power expressly granted, those necessarily implied therewith, as well as powers necessary appropriate or incidental for its efficient and effective governance and those which are essential to the promotion of general welfare. The Philippine Atmospheric, Geophysical and Astronomical Services Administration, or the PAGASA, is the State Weather Bureau of the Philippines mandated to provide protection against natural calamities and utilize scientific knowledge as the effective instrument to ensure safety, well-being and economic safety of all the people and for promotion of national progress. On May 2, 2023, recent developments in the Tropical Pacific have led PAGASA to raise PAGASA El Nino Southern Oscillation, or ENSO, Alert and Warning System to El Nino Alert, where recent conditions and model forecasts indicate that El Nino may emerge in coming season, June, July, August, at 80% probability and may persist until the first quarter of 2024. In addition, El Nino phenomenon has a serious and adverse effect on agriculture, particularly rice and corn production, which may affect the availability and distribution of food in the country and in the region. Moreover, the Bureau of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources, or BPAR, said that the country's fish supply may be affected by looming El Nino, which could result in fish kills. Although the PAGASA has upgraded its warning status from El Nino Alert to El Nino Advisory, the State Weather Bureau said in a press conference last July 4, 2023, that this El Nino is currently weak, but it shows signs of strengthening in the coming months. The Weather Bureau warned that El Nino increases the likelihood of below to normal rainfall conditions and that some areas in the Philippines could experience dry spell and droughts, which may affect resources, agriculture, energy, health and public safety. El Nino's effect on the country, particularly dry spell, may be felt more than more toward the fourth quarter of 2023 and the first half of 2024. Similarly, the PAGASA has warned that El Nino is already present in the central ecatorial Pacific, wherein the ocean is really warmer, but we're not yet totally feeling the impact of the phenomenon. And moreover, Mr. Speaker, in the State of the Nation address of the President yesterday, he also emphasized about the preparation of the El Nino. In view of the foregoing, Mr. Speaker, I humbly seek the immediate approval of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I now move to open the period of interpolation.
The period of interpolation debate on Proposed Resolution No. 279... Ah, no. Yeah, 279 is now open.
May we recognize MP Ramos to be followed by MP Lorena, Mr. Speaker?
The lady from Lana Del Sur is recognized. Secretariat, please take note of the attendance of the lady Deputy Speaker from Basilan.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Assalamualaikum wrak manor of him. Assalamualaikum wrak manor of him. Gusto ko pong ipahayag ang aking buong suporta sa resolution na ito na humihimok sa ating Bangsa-Moro government. Na gumawa ng mga pagkahanda para imitigate at itrevent ang effects ng El Nino sa ating region. Meron lang akong katanungan patungkol dito. Nabanggit mo sa resolution na kailangan maghanda ang ating Bangsa-Moro government. Maari mo ba kaming bigyan ng ilang ilang measures na nasa isip mo na dapat ay isagawa ng ating Bangsa-Moro government bilang pagkahanda sa tapipintong El Nino?
Mrs. Speaker, thank you very much. Mr. Speaker, ayoko pong panganahan 'yung Government of the Day. Pero malinaw po sa atin na ang epekto po ng El Nino ay nasa ating tubig at pagkain at maging sa ating kalusugan. Kung kaya't 'yung ating Government of the Day, ay hiniikayat natin na gumawa ng mga hakbang. Kung ano man ang hakbang nila na gagawin, it should be contained in a plan. And so, with this resolution, we are expecting that they will come up with a plan in order to prepare for the upcoming El Nino. Pangalawa, there might be some structures that may need to be created, like a technical working group or a task force El Nino or other bodies that needs to look at or study regarding the necessary preparatory measures that should be undertaken by the Bangsa-Moro government. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Maraming salamat sa iyong kasagutan, Mrs. Speaker. Ako din po ay naniniwala na isang sektor na malaking maapektuhan ng El Nino ay ang sektor ng agrikultura. So, siguro isa ito sa maaring tignan ang ating Bangsa-Moro government paano natin masusuportahan ang sektor ng agrikultura, particular ang ating mga farmers, no? Dahil isa sila, base na rin sa pag-aaral, na sila ang malaking maapektuhan na sektor. Ang huling katanungan ko lang dahil may mga pag-aaral sa mga effects, no, ng El Nino sa atin, no? Pwede mo bang mai-share sa amin kung ano ba 'yung long-term effects ng El Nino na kinakailangan ang ating Bangsa-Moro government ay paghandaan ang epekto nito sa ating region?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Wala akong particular na study na masasai't sa inyo, pero ang sapagkaalang ko, Mr. Speaker, kung medyo mapahaba 'yung ating El Nino na mangyayari, unang-una na-experience na natin ito noon. Noong nagkaroon ng El Nino sometime, hindi ko na alam, siguro mga year 2000 and that. Ang unang naapektuhan sa atin, particularly dito sa BAR, ay itong ating mga IP's, lalong-lalo na sa UP. Nagkaroon ng shortage ng pagkain. In fact, there was one area in UP, Maginda now, at that time, na nagresulto 'yung mga tao na kumain ng kamote. That it so happened that kamote ay mukhang hindi siya na-process at may namatay sa pagkain nung pagkain na yon, which is a consequence of that long El Nino. So, kung matagal-tagal mangyayari 'yung El Nino, magkakaroon ng shortage ng pagkain, bigas, bisda, at 'yung productivity ng ating lupa, no, ay maapektuhan din. Kaya, generally, the produce for food and fish will be affected.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Huli na lang po ito. Nabanggit mo kanina na pwedeng mag-create ang Bangsa-Moro government a task force, no? Actually, sa atin sa national, meron na-create na presidential task force by virtue of an executive order, no? Ito siguro baka magandang mapanggit din natin ito sa resolution para mas lalong mapagtibay natin itong ating resolution at ito 'yung aking magiging naman ng proposal bedroom at later time. So, yun lang po, gusto kong pasalamatan at comment ang ating good proposal at maraming salamat po.
Yeah, in due time, Mrs. Speaker. Bago ko po, sorry po.
Bago ko po makalimutan, I want to associate myself to be an author of the proposed resolution.
Yes, accepted, Mrs. Speaker.
The gentleman from Sulu is very glad.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Majority Leader. I applaud you therefore for giving me this opportunity to... First, to manifest that I really support the idea of preparing for El Nino, but there are some concerns that I have to raise, which I think the lady author can provide. I hope she is willing to answer further questions.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In the title of this resolution, you mentioned preparatory measures. What does preparatory measure mean? Because climate change is now prevalent in the country, but all over the world. When you say preparatory, this is your term? Long-term or just a condition precedent for a measure? Full-time measure for El Nino?
Um, Mrs. Speaker, we have to distinguish 'yung climate change with the this El Nino. El Nino is just one of the manifestations or effect of the climate change, Mrs. Speaker. So, 'yung El Nino po ay based sa pagtatayan ng PAGASA ay may timeframe na kailan siya posible ng mangyayari. So, ang paghahandaan po natin ay 'yung period na yon na ano ang kailangan nating magawa para 'yung effect ng El Nino during that period ay hindi masyadong maramdaman ng mga tao at hindi masyadong maapektuhan 'yung mga pangkabuhayan ng ating mga kaistituan, si Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You earlier mentioned in your introduction of this resolution, the characteristic of El Nino is similar to a dry spell, am I correct?
Yes, Mrs.
We expect for a dry spell, but commonly in many regions of our country, we vary not only in rainfall, but in the kind of dry spell that we experience. We now know even with the declaration of El Nino, we still have rains in some parts of our region. Are there measures that can be adapted here which has not been adopted by other regions that you may propose?
I don't exactly know kung ano 'yung kind of preparations that the other regions are doing, but as far as we are concerned, we really need to prepare.
More particularly, I am referring to water shortages in case of El Nino. Do you think we still have to prepare for reservation for water in the region?
Yes, precisely, Mr. Speaker. Kaya nga sabi ko, unang-una, kailangan lumatag ng isang plano. Sa plano na 'yan, ma-identify natin kung ano 'yung kakailanganin. At isa sa nakikita natin dyan ay 'yung mga paglalagyan natin ng patubig. Kung may mga projects kayo na ongoing or hindi pa na-start patungkol sa pag-impound ng tubig, kailangan ipastrac yon para mag-ready na tayo sa El Nino. So, this will be the consequence pag napasan natin ito at pagkaroon ng pagpupulong sa part ng Government of the day kung ano mga preparatory measures, they have to look at their own mandates and see what can be, what they could contribute in order to prepare for the upcoming El Nino.
In this measure, which I can consider as an action plan, because you mentioned that the El Nino is projected to become very strong in the third quarter of this 2023, the first quarter of 2024. Now, my question is, since this is the last quarter and the first quarter, the budget of many of the departments are already dwindling. If they are true to the performance of their prepared plans submitted to us for budget, are you not intending to request for additional funds for these agencies just on the contingent fund to be allocated for the purpose of the preparation for El Nino?
Anyway, Mr. Speaker, all of these things would go to the office of the Chief Minister. And the Chief Minister is the ones who approves the utilization of the contingent fund. And part of the funds of the contingent fund can be allocated for the action plan that might be prepared by the Government of the day.
You also mentioned in your introductory introduction of this resolution that the sector most affected by El Nino are agriculture, fisheries, health and especially everyone for water. So, may if the lady sponsor knows, do we have sufficient amount within the ministries of agriculture, health and fisheries that can be allocated for purposes of introducing these preparatory measures for El Nino?
One, Mr. Speaker, one possible measure that can be done by the ministries is to set aside funding or specific programs and projects intended for would-be or targeted areas that might be affected. So, 'yan po ay mapapalob dun sa plano as to how much and what kind of specific activities or projects that will be done, that will be discussed within the ministries and offices.
We believe that agencies may be able to calculate early savings, although we can only declare savings in the fiscal year. But any saving for non-operational of some programs, is the intention of this resolution directed also to agencies for them to utilize some of these funds for preparatory measures for El Nino.
For me, Mr. Speaker, I don't see the funding as a constraint in order to prepare because under the OCM, we have the contingent fund and also we have other kind of funds for disaster, for agriculture, infrastructure and health education, I think, which can be tapped by the concerned ministries and offices for this particular action plan that they might prepare, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, in the preparation of plans, are we not contemplating utilizing our Regional Planning and Development Board since they are the planning agencies to prepare an action plan together with the ministry related to El Nino?
Mr. Speaker, I think it's an established system already that when we talk about plan, we have a structure and that structure is the BDC through the BPDA, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, thank you for all those elucidation. I want, I intend to support and in fact, I want to be associated with this resolution. Thank you.
Yes, accepted, Mr. Speaker. Next to interpolate, Mr. Speaker, is MP Sinolindin to be followed by MP Mendoza and then MP Makasalo. Next, to interpolate, Mr. Speaker, is MP Sinolindin, to be followed by MP Mendoza, and then MP Macasalo.
The gentleman from the FGA is recognized.
Assalamualaikum wrakmalaikum wrakmalaikum. Barakatuhu. Mr. Speaker, would you pour to see to the main proponent of this resolution for purposes of leveling of understanding about El Nino phenomenon? Can you please elaborate further? What is El Nino? What understanding everybody?
Okay, simplian na lang natin dahil hindi ako scientist, ano? So, kung mainit, 'yung ano 'yung normal sa atin at lumakpas doon sa normal ng sobra-sobra, I think yun na 'yung mararamdaman mo na El Nino. Pero that will be, that will become official when the pag-asa declares it. And right now, there's already a declaration. Although, ang napipill natin ngayon ay medyo may ulan, pero kung conscious kayo, mapipill niyo rin na kung walang ulan, talagang mararamdaman nung balat ninyo na mainit.
Mr. Speaker, will it be okay if we consider El Nino as reduction of rainfall as part of the phenomenon?
I don't exactly know if there is a direct correlation of the rainfall because I think there's a factor about the humidity. So, that we will try to find out if, of course, pag may rainfall, maibsan 'yung init, but 'yung init kasi is gibe na yon, ano?
So, kung meron ulan, maibsan siya, pero pag declare na yan na El Nino, talagang hindi na siya doon sa normal.
Mr. Speaker, I was asking this because consequently, the effect will be related to the diminution or the lack of water in the community. And because of that, it will have four major effects on the people. First directly is on health in terms of dehydration. Second is an effect of the unsanitary condition by the lack of water, considering na kung saan-saan na lang magdumi, magtatapon ng dumi, at alam po natin ang panghugas ng mga kinakain natin is through a clean source of water. Pangatlo po, Mr. Speaker, is it has an implication on the food production. With the reduction of food production, our food security will also be affected, and that may end up with aggravating the malnutrition problem of our region. And lastly, Mr. Speaker, you made mention about some people eating cassava. Cassava actually is a nutritious source of energy as an alternate rice, but it has a high content of cyanide and that can only be removed by fluorewashing or cooking. At kung sakasakaling magkaroon po ng tagtuyon or extended na tag-init, only cassava and other related root crops survive this kind of diminished rainfall or water supply. Kaya people tend to resort on taking cassava. Considering po 'yung mga direct and indirect effects sa ating kalusugan at sa ating environment, I commend the author for bringing this up kasi I've heard also that starting September, makakaranas na talaga tayo ng epekto ng El Nino. And considering this day is already on the 25th day of July, barely have more than a month, I think baka mahabol pa natin, Mr. Speaker, if we really focus on addressing the possible and probable shortage of water, especially in the islands where sources of fresh water is always at the mercy of rainfall. And because of the importance of this resolution, Mr. Speaker, I would like to associate myself in the resolution. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much for that very clear explanation as to the effects and direct and indirect effects of El Nino. And the manifestation with regards to authorship is accepted.
The lady from South Upi, from Dato Blasig, is what Maguindanaw is recognized.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Unang-una, ako ay natutuwa at merong panukalang ginagawa, ano? Na may kinalaman sa ating paghahanda sa inaasahan nating tag-init o drought. Maalala po, Mr. Speaker, noong 1980s, nagkaroon din ng eight-long month drought sa bayan ng South Upi. At isa sa mga naapektuhan nito ay 'yung ating mga katutubong pamayanan. Actually, Mr. Speaker, hindi lang 'yung tag-init ang naranasa noon, kahit 'yung paglipanan ng mga grasshopper, and they are become more violent at inaattackerin nila 'yung taniman ng ating mga katutubong payan-pamayanan. And I've experienced that, Mr. Speaker. Pero 'yung mga katutubo kasi ay, ang sabi nila at may paniniwala sila na 'yung 1980s na drought ay dahil nga 'yung temperatura ng daigdig ay nagbabago at normal na dumaan sa yugto ng buhay ang katauhan, ano? Na magkaroon ng tag-init dahil ito ay bahagi ng pag-inog ng mundo. Pero itong 1990s at itong 20th century, Mr. Speaker, ay sa diyang nakakabahala. Dahil 'yung pagbabago at adverse climatic condition ng ating mundo ay hindi siya normal, abnormal siya. Abnormal nga siya dahil ng sabi ng mga experts, ito ay may kinalaman sa parahas na intervention ng sangkatauhan sa inang lupa. Kaya nagkakaroon ito ng epekto sa buong mamangayad, hindi lamang dito sa Bangsomoro, Mr. Speaker. Ang North at South Upi, Mr. Speaker, sila 'yung munisipyo sa bar na corn producing municipality. Actually, itatanim mo lang 'yung mais sa mga tabi-tabi ay tumutubo siya dahil nga 'yung texture ng lupain ay fit doon sa corn. Dahil 'yung kanyang topography din ay bulubundukin at ito 'yung gusto ng ating corn. And at the same time, 'yung clay ay faraon clay. Kaya mas gustong-gusto dito ng corn na tumubo. So, malaking maapektuhan nito 'yung ating mga magsasakano na nag-eengage sa corn production. Alam natin na 'yung corn ay mahalaga dahil ito 'yung raw materials na ginagamit doon sa paggawa natin ng flour. At pangalawa, Mr. Speaker, nabanggit kanina na gusto kong, kung merong mga plano o mga preparatory measures na gagawin ay maisali 'yung ating mga corn farmer at the same time, 'yung ating mga indigenous community dahil sa tutulang sila 'yung direktong apektado nito. Hindi lamang doon sa mga measures, may mga record nga na nagsasabi na actually, may lima kaming naidokumento noon na namatay sa pagkain ng wild yam ang tawag doon, Mr. Speaker. Hindi siya 'yung ordinary kamote. Ang pagpaproseso noon ay dapat 'yung water is running. Kasi pag hindi running 'yung water, nanood 'yung poisonous substance sa wild yam na yun. At kailangan mo siyang idry up, continuous dapat 'yung flowing ng water. So, kaya 'yung mga katutubo ay pumupunta sila sa mga inog tuwing tag-init dahil magahanap nga, magahant ng wild yam. At the same time, doon rin siya huhugasan sa rumaragasang tubig na yun. Kaya, Mr. Speaker, ako po ay sumusuporta sa panukalang ito at sa mga susunod na pagkakataon, kung merong mga preparatory measures, ay maisali 'yung ating mga corn farmer at ang ating mga indigenous community. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, for that manifestation. And I believe that the government of the day would include the MIPA in any planning exercises later on. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Final interpolator would be MP Macasalo, Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman from Lanodels is recognized.
Dapat 'yung mga guapo.
That's the purpose of having this interpolation, to pronounce this in a way. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just a few classic Catholic questions, Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Kailan po ba, or may alam po ba natin kung kailan 'yung last na naramdaman natin 'yung El Nino, at least in our region?
I think, kung hindi ako nagkakamili, 2015, 2014. Kasi because of that El Nino, I happen to join an activity in Thailand to represent the den arm together with UNDP in a regional forum. I think 2015.
Let's say 2015, Mr. Speaker. And 'yung kwento mo po ba kanina na kamote ay around that year, 2015?
'Yung ano na yan, siguro mga 20, part siya, nung ano na yon, part siya nung nangyari.
I'm asking questions like that to like, to have a picture of what's really happening kung magiging worse 'yung effects sa atin ng El Nino. And dahil, dahil kanina, sinabi mo na like 80% talaga ay, like 80% ay matatamaan tayo ng adverse effect ng El Nino. Hindi po ba tinitingnan ng proponent of this resolution? Or maybe this august body na kailangan mo talagang isama sa budgeting natin for the coming years? Kasi talagang 'yung effect, as you said, ay talagang very adverse.
Yes, for this year, I think hindi natin problema kasi meron namang contingent. For the succeeding year, we can incorporate that because we are nearing the budgeting process now. So, we can discuss that. I think mas maigi na 'yung government of the day ay may present na clear na plano para isang appropriation na lang, rather than putting it into the agencies na watak-watak siya. So, mas maigi, mapasan natin itong resolution. There would be a corresponding actions coming from the government of the day. Kapag gawan ng plano, in time for the budgeting, makapaglaan tayo ng kondo.
That's all, Mr. Speaker, because tinitingnan natin na kahit o, for example, walang may mga plano tayo, kung wala rin naman o hindi magreflect sa budget ng bawat ministry, mahihirapan din po 'yung mga ministries sa pag-implement ng any measure that they have after plan. Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker, and I would like to associate in this resolution.
Yes, manifestation accepted, Mrs. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I now move to terminate the period of interpolation.
There is now a motion to terminate the period of interpolation. Seconded, the motion is approved.
I move to open the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
The period of amendment on proposed resolution number 279 is now opened.
May we recognize MP Jamila Ramos, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I only have one proposed amendment. If the good principal author would read to the proposed amendment.
Yes.
I would like to include in the eight where as laws, the executive order number 16, which establishes, and it says were as, executive order number 16 constituting a presidential task force to mitigate the effects of the El Nino-Laninya phenomenon states that the El Nino-Laninya phenomenon may have a great impact on the people's lives, environment, health, and social economic conditions in terms of loss of life, disruption of production, livelihood opportunities, disruption of essential services, and damage to property and national infrastructure. Mr. Speaker, by including this provision in the eight where as laws, emphasizes the importance and urgency of this resolution. And by referring to the existing executive order, it stresses the fact that the national government has previously deemed the issue significant enough to warrant a dedicated task force. And it also serves to link the effort of the Bangsomoro government with those of that, with that of the national government, Mr. Speaker. And Mrs. Speaker.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, I accept, except that we need to put, what series is that? Series of 2023? And maybe we can place it above, don sa mga legal basis?
Yeah, maybe we could after, on the fourth, after the third where as. I think it would be more after the, kasi doon inagayo mga legal basis.
Oh, wait lang. If that is 2021, I'm afraid that that EO, it's so old, baka hindi na siya applicable.
I think the...
Can we just state the effects of Laninya here now without citing the executive order?
Okay. I think that would be a better... May I rephrase my proposed amendment to exclude executive order number 16? To where as the El Nino-Laninya phenomenon may have a great impact, something like that. Would that be acceptable to the principal author?
Yes, tanggalin na lang natin 'yung Laninya, kasi ang subject lang...
Okay, okay.
Okay, accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you to our good proponent.
Secretary, please take note, the proponent has accepted the proposed amendment.
Mr. Speaker, I move to terminate the period of amendment.
The period of amendment on proposed resolution number 279 is now terminated.
I move to approve proposed resolution number 279 as amended, subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve proposed resolution number 279 as amended and subject to style. It's been seconded. Hearing the objection, the motion is approved.
Next, Mr. Speaker, is proposed resolution number 318. May we request the secretary to please read the title, the author, and the co-authors.
The secretary is directed to read the title and the name of the authors and co-authors of proposed resolution number 318.
Proposed resolution number 318 entitled, "Resolution Requesting the Ministry of Health to Establish a Food and Drug Administration FDA Regional Field Office in the Bangsomoro Autonomous Region in Muslimin Danau Bar." Author, member of the parliament, Dolan Mustafa Loong. Co-authors, members of parliament, Liza Alamiang, Baitan Batuang, Rasool Bitung Jr., Adelbar Mualil, Suwarto Muluto, Rasool Ismail Benjamil Loong, Japara Paulan Galmatalam, Abdul Karimi Swari, Jose Lorena, Abdalajiz Amenoden, Jamila Ramos, Ashtar Usman, Muhammad Kedyang Tau, Aidi Ali Tawakal Mitimbang, Madim Abu, Suay Puranong, Basil Utu, Bay Malihakandau, and Michael Mitimbang.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer proposed resolution 318 to the Committee on Health.
There is a motion to refer proposed resolution number 318 to the Committee on Health, been seconded. Hearing the objection, the motion is approved.
Next, Mr. Speaker, is proposed resolution number 320. May we request the secretary to please read the title, the author, and the co-authors.
The secretary is directed to read the title of proposed resolution number 320, including the name of the authors and authors.
Proposed resolution number 320 entitled, "Resolution Urging the National Commission of Muslims and Filipinos, LCMF, and the Department of Health Bureau Quarantine BOQ to Adapt and Introduce Mechanisms That Will Minimize the Burden on Pilgrims from the Island Provinces in Complying with the Health Vaccination Requirement." Author, member of the parliament, Dolan Mustafa Loong. Co-authors, members of parliament, Liza Alamiang, Benjamil Loong, Baitan Batuang, Rasool Bitung Jr., Adelbar Mualil, Suwarto Muluto, Rasool Ismail, John Anthony Lee, Japara Paulan Galmatalam, Abdul Mo Makabahan, Michael Mitimbang, Hatimir Hassan, Tawakal Mitimbang, Albakir, Chikiri, Abdalajiz Amenoden, Dan Asnavi, Muhammad Kedyang Tau, Abdul Wahab, Pat, and Nabila Margarita Pangandang.
Mr. Speaker, I move to treat proposed resolution 320 as a simple resolution.
There is a motion to treat proposed resolution number 320 as a simple resolution. There is a motion to treat proposed resolution number 320 as a simple resolution. Any second, there being no objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, before I move to open the period of inter... Uh, before we recognize the, uh, um, principal author, I move for a break, a short break, Mr. Speaker. Um, I hope that we can maintain the 15-minute break and come back to the gallery, Mr. Speaker.
Recede for 15 minutes.
Mr Speaker, may we recognize the principal author of the proposed resolution MP Don Musacano.
The gentleman from Sulu is recognized.
Thank you, Mr Speaker. Mr Speaker, this resolution is born out of the pleas of our Bangsa Mora constituents in the island provinces who are plagued with bureaucratic inconveniences when coordinating with government offices in preparation for the Hajj. Through this resolution, we are hoping for improvement in the services that will give less stress to our pilgrims from Basilan-Sulu and Tawi-Tawi who have to go to Zamboanga City to be inoculated. In fact, a few months ago, during the inoculation process, the pilgrims had to wait the whole day because issues about unsealed vaccines were delaying the process. And that is in addition to the fact that pilgrims are given short notice to go to Zamboanga for a one-day vaccination. So this simple resolution is just requesting the NCMF and the Bureau of Quarantine to have better systems. Perhaps they could do the vaccination in the provinces themselves so that the pilgrims will not have to spend more money for this requirement.
Thank you. Mr Speaker, I am now moved to open the period of interpellation.
The period of interpellation debate on proposed resolution number...
320.
320 is now open.
We recognize MP Adi Ali.
The gentleman from Tawi-Tawi is recognized.
Thank you, Mr Speaker. I just would like to find out if the proponent would accede to some restrictive requirements?
Yes, Mr Speaker.
Being from... Mr Speaker, the proponent being from Sulu and just recently had gone to full Hajj, may I know to what extent is the burden on our pilgrims in getting vaccination for the Hajj?
Mr Speaker, the burden is that the vaccination is sent by the NCMF to the Bureau of Quarantine in Zamboanga at an undetermined date, and then the pilgrims are given due to one day to be there for that one vaccination. And then, so they will have to immediately travel from Basilan-Sulu and Tawi-Tawi. And if they miss that schedule, then it would require another tedious process of coordination. So this is what we want the NCMF and the Bureau of Quarantine to have coordination mechanisms so that maybe next time, they can hold the vaccination in Basilan-Sulu and Tawi-Tawi and it will not have to require the pilgrims to go to Zamboanga on short notice.
Mr Speaker, is the proponent aware that this problem is not only for Basilan-Sulu and Tawi-Tawi, but even for the mainland of Bali? They are also having this sort of problem. Is the proponent, Mr Speaker, aware of this?
Mr Speaker, the consideration that the author had placed on this is that the ones from Tawi-Tawi, Sulu, and Basilan need to take the boat or the airplane. The vaccination from the mainland, either in Cotabato or Lanau, would only require traveling by land. So in terms of the difficulty, it would still look manageable, but the challenge really is in the island provinces because we know the boat from Zamboanga to Holo is very difficult. We know how long the boat from Tawi-Tawi is also very difficult. So this is the reason why this resolution had focused on the island provinces. And also in my discussion with the Bureau of Quarantine and consultation with other staff, they did not mention to me the difficulties in the mainland provinces.
Notwithstanding that this problem is also experienced by the pilgrims from the mainland, it's DOH Region 9 which is deputized by NCMF to do the vaccination for the Basilita area?
Mr Speaker, it is the Bureau of Quarantine who is just requested by the NCMF to administer the vaccine, but the procurement is through the NCMF. So they send it to the Bureau of Quarantine and they ask the Bureau of Quarantine to inject the pilgrims. Thus, the sheikhs are given a schedule, say two days from now, three days from now, please bring all your pilgrims to Zamboanga City at 7:00 in the morning for the vaccination. And during that time, in May 9, the pilgrims were already there, more than 100, at 7:00 AM, but it took them up to 3:00 PM for the vaccination because of issues of vaccines that were delivered that were not sealed. So the Bureau of Quarantine did not want to administer it. So again, the pilgrims were stressed under the heat of the sun with no lunch pack. So we are hoping and appealing that by this resolution, the NCMF and the Bureau of Quarantine can talk about mechanisms early on so that next year, there will be systems to implement the vaccination in Basilan-Sulu, Tawi-Tawi, these island provinces without needing to go to Zamboanga as well as ensuring the quality and the integrity of the vaccines.
Mr Speaker, is the proponent saying that the problem is with the NCMF?
Mr Speaker, I am not saying that the problem is with the NCMF. I am saying that this resolution is asking the NCMF and the Department of Health Bureau of Quarantine to adopt and institute mechanisms to minimize the burden. So we are asking the... So we are asking the DOH, BOQ, and the NCMF to talk and institute mechanisms. Sila na po ang bahala mag-usap paano nila gagawin. Ang importante, ang outcome niya is less stressful and more convenient sa mga pilgrims natin.
Mr Speaker, is the proponent also aware that this problem has been going on for all these years?
Mr Speaker, I believe that innovation in governance is one of the strengths of the Bangsa Moro government. Especially with the Bangsa Moro, the PTA, addressing the problems of delayed salaries that existed for 20 years and we were able to solve it. So I believe, Mr Speaker, there is hope in innovation and governance and dialogue. And with this resolution, early on, I think there might be innovative ways that the NCMF and the Bureau of Quarantine can institute to ease the burden on the pilgrims.
Mr Speaker, I'm asking the question because this problem, this kind of mechanism has been going on for all these years. And the pilgrims have been facing this problem all these years also. And I'm happy that the proponent is coming up with this resolution. But is the proponent proposing this resolution that the NCMF and DOH will go down to Tawi-Tawi, Sulu, and Basilan so that it will be easy for the pilgrims to do the vaccination for the pilgrims?
Yes, Mr Speaker. This resolution is requesting them to minimize the burden on the pilgrims from Basilan-Sulu and Tawi-Tawi. And so it will depend now on their ability to provide mechanisms. Inshallah, since this resolution is early for next year, maybe they can find ways to safely bring these vaccines to the island provinces and have the vaccinations there.
Mr Speaker, in the past, did NCMF and DOH also did the vaccination in this island in the past?
I am not aware, Mr Speaker.
And I don't also remember that NCMF and DOH had gone to Tawi-Tawi for the vaccination. I'm asking this question, Mr Speaker, because I believe that this resolution is filed because we have an existing problem. And will it be possible for us? The proponent is saying that the NCMF and DOH can have innovations, can have possible mechanisms to lessen the burden of the pilgrims. But will it be also good for us, Mr Speaker, if we can already mention in the resolution that, you know, suggesting to them that they should have the vaccination in Tawi-Tawi, Basilan, and Sulu rather than just making it open to them? I'm saying this, Mr Speaker, because if the NCMF and the DOH are aware of this problem or would like to address this problem, they should have done this long before. And I would appreciate the proponent, Mr Speaker, that we came up with this resolution. But I'm suggesting to make it much stronger that we say to them, let's have a de-vaccination in Sulu, Basilan, and Tawi-Tawi rather than just, you know, allowing them to think they may not be able to think about it because if they have been thinking about this, they should have done this long before, Mr Speaker.
Mr Speaker, the reason why we did not specifically immediately state that it be implemented in Basilan, Sulu, and Tawi-Tawi is that the considerations and reasons on transporting vaccines are factors. So that is why we placed it on a general note because we believe that if this will go to the attention of the top management of the NCMF and the DOH and they plan it early, then these mechanisms can be done, but the operational discussion should be on their level.
Mr Speaker, I think it is more reasonable if we can already state in the resolution. If we say that it is still, you know, we still have enough time that even for the transportation of the vaccines can be addressed later. But if that innovation includes the transportation of the vaccines, then it can be done. It can be done. But we say this, that this should be done. This should be done. So, Mr Speaker, that's all. But in the period of amendments, I would like to move for some amendments to specifically mention that the vaccination can be done in the island provinces. Thank you, Mr Speaker.
Thank you, Mr Speaker. The author agrees with the idea of the gentleman from Tawi-Tawi, Mr Speaker.
Mr Speaker, Deputy Speaker Tan wishes to be recognized on Zoom.
The other gentleman from Sulu is recognized.
My dear brother, the sponsor, will you yield to a few clarificatory questions? Thank you. Thank you, Don. MP Don. Mr Speaker, the sponsor speaks of providing mechanisms, coordination mechanisms, finding ways, and planning early. Does it mean if you have coordination, it will be done early? Or let me state this, that do you know that Sulu has been coordinating with the Bureau of Quarantine for the vaccine of the supposed pilgrims, coordinating with the Sulu Provincial Health Office, providing them manpower and assisting them in some other ways? Did you know that, Mr Speaker?
What I know, Mr Speaker, is in my discussion with the head of the Bureau of Quarantine in Zamboanga is that he requested me to raise this issue that early on, there should be coordination so that the procurement of the vaccine can be done early and consideration as to transportation of vaccines would also be given attention because he was at a quandary because the vaccine that was delivered to him was not sealed. And so he did not want to administer it to the pilgrims. That made the pilgrims wait the whole day in the Bureau of Quarantine. So I believe that early, early top-level discussion between the DOH and the NCMF as well as mitigating risks and problems will be able to address this challenge.
For information of everyone, in Sulu, they have been doing that every year already. Of course, as you said, there was coordination between the Bureau of Quarantine and the Provincial Integrated Health Office. More so, last, more so, it can be facilitated if it is the local government that will coordinate with the Bureau of Quarantine. They can go down to Sulu or anywhere else because they also need some assistance. And last year, it was Governor Tan who invited them and they were willingly, they were in Sulu to administer the vaccine. So I think the gentleman is correct that if we do coordination, provide mechanisms on how to handle and finding ways, this can be done. So if we do it, maybe it will be more laborious if you go to National Commission on Muslim Philippines because I remember that even during the time of my cousin, your cousin-in-law, Cousin-in-law of Basilithrowena, Tan Loong, during her time as Regional Director, there was already vaccination in Sulu. So maybe bago gisingin lang at gawin uli 'yung ano, pero dire-diretong sa Sulu, every year meron coordination ang Bureau of Quarantine. And I was informed that if it is the LGU, provincial governments that will coordinate with the Bureau of Quarantine, there is really no problem about vaccination. So do you... I think this resolution is trying to, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but trying to just wake up, it's a wake-up call for early coordination. 'Yun lang siguro ang pakainang resolution na 'to. Ganun ba, MP Don?
Yes, Speaker, to wake them up, to coordinate early, and also to maybe draft clear terms of reference stipulating who is responsible, who is accountable, who should be informed, and who should be coordinated. Because what happened last May is that the pilgrims pay for the vaccination and it is transferred to the sheik then to the NCMF, I think. And then it's the NCMF that technically procures. And the NCMF coordinates with the Bureau of Quarantine to administer. So I think clearer terms of reference and memorandum of agreement, tripartite agreements that involves the provincial government, the Bureau of Quarantine, and the NCMF should be made because the Bureau of Quarantine is only administering. They do not have the vaccine. They do not have control when the vaccine arrives. So the NCMF must be a key party to integrate all the parties.
So the coordination should be triumvirate, NCMF, Bureau of Quarantine, and the local government unit, the provincial government, because these are our people and I think this is still effective governance if they can help facilitate. But just for info, the province of Sulu has been doing that already for several years. But anyway, just for information of everyone. Thank you, Mr Speaker.
Thank you, Mr Speaker.
Mr Speaker, may we recognize Deputy Speaker Lisa Alamiya?
The lady from Basilan is recognized.
Salam alaykum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Thank you, Mr Speaker.
Hajj mabur.
Shukran. Jazakallahukairan. Thank you, the floor leader. I am one of the co-authors of this resolution, Mr Speaker. And MP Don Loong, the main proponent, and I met in Saudi Arabia under different circumstances. So we both went to Hajj in Saudi Arabia. And just to add to the facts, Mr Speaker, with respect to the mechanism that was set up by the NCMF on vaccination, it has been established already earlier. So I have a question after this. It has been established that first, it was the NCMF who did the procurement of the vaccines. And vaccines pertain to a responsibility under the domain of public health of which the competent agencies would include the Department of Health. And NCMF is not a health agency. Second, after procurement, in fact, because it is not a health agency and it does not have that competence nor authority to inject or vaccinate people, it has partnered and coordinated with the Bureau of Quarantine to do the vaccination, well and good. But as established, the problem was in the process of doing the vaccination. So, Mr Speaker, Mr Proponent, MP Don Loong, in my experience in the vaccination for this year's Hajj, we were vaccinated a day before we left, before our flight to Madina and then the flight to Saudi Arabia, to Madina specifically. So that's less than 24 hours before the flight. And we know that vaccination for meningococcal disease and the other one would require, even for COVID-19, if you're vaccinated, you're required to stay at home for 24 hours because there are some effects. These are not adverse effects, but this would normally occur after a vaccination. So you have, your immune system is down, so your body is developing the antibodies that would be produced through the vaccines, and so you need to rest. But that was not the case because, Mr Speaker, stated in the resolution, there was a problem with the mechanism. Not only were the vaccines late, but the vaccination itself was scheduled only in Zamboanga City for Basota plus the Zamboanga and Zamboanga Peninsula Hajj, Hujaj, who were also lining up for the vaccination. And so it was delayed and there was no time to rest first before going on a flight. So many of those who were vaccinated a day before their flights or two days before the flights to Saudi Arabia, their immune systems were actually compromised on the airplane in a long-haul flight, nine to 10 hours of flight. Those who went direct to Saudi Arabia. So, Mr Speaker, I would like to just clarify from the proponent. He was able to learn from the Bureau of Quarantine. If the NCMF is basing that mechanism of working with the BOQS through a contract with the BOQ, the Bureau of Quarantine, or, and second, if the terms and conditions within that contract stated those specific instructions where not only would the vaccines should be given a week before, for example, the flight, or even including a provision where the vaccines are made available to the Hujaj in their places of residence, meaning in Basilan, in Sulu, and Tawi-Tawi, and would that contract include also a coordination, as mentioned by DS Nabil Tan, with the local government units because there are IPHOs, PHOs, and Rural Health Doctors in every municipality in the Barm that can do the vaccination or inoculation if only there was a coordination between the NCMF and the DOH, NCMF and the MOH together with the BOQ? Thank you, Mr Speaker.
Mr Speaker, from my discussion with the head of the Bureau of Quarantine in Zamboanga, what he told me was that the NCMF simply sends, informs them that the vaccine will arrive on this day and then the pilgrims... and then the pilgrims from Western Mindanao should have, uh, their, uh, uh, vaccination on those dates. So the Bureau Quarantine, uh, does not have, um, well specifically, the one in Zamwanga, does not, did not have, uh, the coordination mechanisms or the, uh, in fact, uh, they were, he was, uh, mentioning that, uh, protocols of ensuring the, um, the vaccine is sealed, uh, are not, uh, being followed. So he was saying that there should be better coordination between the Bureau Quarantine and the NCMF so that this, uh, would not happen. Because the Bureau Quarantine in Zamwanga was also, um, in danger of, uh, uh, the, the anger of the pilgrims who were, who were in his office by the hundreds, and, uh, who had traveled for, uh, quite far also. So, um, from what I gathered in my discussion with him, there is no clear memorandum of agreement or a contract. Uh, from what I gathered from him, uh, I think it's just, uh, maybe, uh, a simple coordination that the vaccine will arrive there, please, uh, administer. So it is for that reason that, uh, we have this resolution so that they can really, uh, prepare memorandum of agreements, uh, clearly defining the roles and responsibilities, and perhaps including as what DS, uh, MP Nabillan mentioned, local government units that can also help.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, uh, as I said, I am one of the co-authors of this resolution, and I support this resolution along with, uh, other resolutions with respect to Hajj. Um, I will be giving my, uh, privileged speech on the issue of the conduct of the Hajj for 2023 at the appropriate time, uh, within the week, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much. Salam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Alaikum salam. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Our final interlocutor is MP, uh, Kaden Sinoliling, Mr. Speaker. May we recognize MP Sinoliling.
The gentleman from the Special Geographic Area, Mr. Speaker, is, uh, acknowledged.
This is Lyra Fman Rahim. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. May I ask the proponent if she's willing to use some clarification?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. First, the issue about vaccination really resonates to many problems that is inherent with the Kudaya Agency that is responsible for our Hajj. May I ask the proponent, how many pilgrims are coming from the Bangsa-Moro region, more or less?
Mr. Speaker, um, from what I unofficially gathered, uh, there were around, uh, 8,000, uh, but I am not, uh, uh, very sure. There were 8,000 from the Philippines. But I am not, uh, aware of exactly how many comes from the Bangsa-Moro region, Mr. Speaker.
According to unofficial sources, there are approximately more than 50% that is coming from the Bangsa-Moro region. Seeing that, Mr. Speaker, it only shows that many pilgrims are coming from our region, and they are the ones affected by the mechanisms that is being instituted before they are allowed to perform Hajj. In the issue of vaccination, Mr. Speaker, we all know that NCMF should not be the primary agency to conduct this because as mentioned by Deputy Speaker Alamiya, she was very right when she said that vaccination is part of the public health, and it is under the realm of Department of Health in our region from the Ministry of Health. Procurement is again within the turf of the Department of Health as part of their vaccination or immunization program. Saying this, Mr. Speaker, I can see so many problems already inherent but tolerated for many years. Back in 2010, when I assumed as the DOH Armed Secretary, there is a strong collaboration and coordination with the NCMF. Our health personnel are the ones instituting the vaccines, and the vaccines are being, uh, taken from the vaccine, uh, facility or logistics supply facility of the Department of Health and the Central Office. I didn't realize na ganun ang problema ngayon, na procurement until administration is still part of the, the, uh, responsibility of, uh, NCMF and being coordinated to the Bureau of Quarantine. To be, uh, candid about this, even the Bureau of Quarantine doesn't have enough manpower, Mr. Speaker, to conduct activity covering 8,000 of our pilgrims. And with this, Mr. Speaker, I fully support this, uh, this, uh, resolution with possible suggestion for amendments that not only in Zamwanga, but it has to be in the provinces, if possible, in the local government units in the municipality level, utilizing our experts in vaccination. That is our, uh, health workers. They were trained for this. All you need to do is just give them the vaccine. In terms of vaccine, uh, was that, the storage facility as well as the logistics and the cold chain management, our immunization program is very, very capable. We have all the storage facilities in our IPHOs. And, uh, tatoto ko din ang sinabi ni Deputy Speaker Tan, that Sulu itself, the province, through the IPHO Sulu, were doing the vaccination even before siguro sa term go, because during my time talagang tuloy-tuloy ang vaccination from 2010 until 2019. That is why I am suggesting during the periods of amendment, Mr. Speaker, to include immunization right there in the community at least one week before they, they departure to Hajj, to allow our pilgrims to recover from the expected side effect or adverse reaction, or the expected reaction from the vaccine that the pilgrims shall receive. Second, uh, Mr. Speaker, is to allow the Ministry of Health to take full responsibility, of course, in partnership, coordination, and collaboration with the NCMF, not just the Bureau Quarantine, because we don't have yet the Bureau Quarantine here in our, uh, in our region. Papapasalam po lastly 'yung, uh, proposal for the bill on the, uh, Bureau Quarantine. And we can utilize the Ministry of Health in this aspect. And, uh, third, Mr. Speaker, you came from the Hajj very recently along with Deputy Speaker Alamiya and MP Haron Abbas, and, and MP Bidex Pakazam, and, uh, MP Romeo Sema. And you have heard the stories and witnessed yourself the hardship that was experienced by our pilgrims. And I think this is because of some sort of lack of management or inadequate management in terms of securing the welfare, the comfort, and the security of our pilgrims. With all the complaints that we have heard, either from social media and from the firsthand information coming from the pilgrims themselves, I myself cannot agree that we will again delegate and put our, uh, trust to the billiard agency. I, I, I support if ever there will be a resolution that the Bangsa-Moro government shall take part, a very active part, in securing and, uh, having a very efficient and effective ways so that this experience will not be repeated again. Yun lang po ang masasabi ko, Mr. Speaker, and, uh, marani salamat po. Wassalam alaikum.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We welcome, uh, proposed amendments later in the due, uh, proper time, Mr. Speaker.
With this, Mr. Speaker, I move to terminate the period of interpolation.
Any objection? If there being none, the period of interpol- the period of interpolation debate is now terminated.
I move to open the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to open the period of amendment. Any second? Hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
May we recognize MP Eddie Ali?
The gentleman from Tawi-Tawi is recognized. Do you have a copy of your proposed amendment? You may now take the rostrum.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My first amendment is, um, the last were asked before the, now therefore, instead of, you know, after, for human administration, uh, for human administration, nakalagay is as well as the conduct of vaccination. Uh, may, may proposal, instead of as well as, is for human con- uh, administration for the conduct. Instead of as well as, it should be for the conduct. Dun po, dun po sa ano. That is third line. Third line sa well as na yan, sa last where as. No, uh, yeah. For human administration as well as the conduct. Instead of as well as, it's for the conduct, for human administration, for the conduct of vaccinations right, for the conduct of vaccination right in the island provinces. Instead of as well as, it is then, yeah, right in the island provinces. And instead of as well as, it's for. Yeah, for the conduct of vaccinations right in the island provinces. Yun lang po, uh, Mr. Speaker. Instead of as well as, that should be for, then in- insert the word right after vaccination. Uh, we accept, Mr. Speaker. And I'm proposing, Mr. Speaker, a last where as. Whereas proper coordination among the NCMF, DOH, and the LGUs of the island provinces shall be timely made every year to ensure the convenience, comfort, and health of the prospective pilgrims.
What is the pleasure of the proponent? We accept, Mr. Speaker. We accept both, both proposed amendments.
Both proposals.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Any other amendments?
Not anymore, Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, MP Sinoliling wishes also to introduce an amendment, Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman from DSG is recognized once again. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to propose an amendment, an additional where as wherein vaccination shall be conducted and administered by our trained health personnel of Ministry of Health in the RHUs of Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao at least one week before their expected date of departure under the supervision of Integrated Provincial Health Office of the respective province.
We accept, Mr. Speaker. Uh, the placing, is it proper? Is that, that does not sound as, uh, a con- uh, a conclusion already? Mr. Speaker, would you wish to use the word "may" so that it would not be mandatory and exclusive?
I agree, Mr. Speaker.
Whereas vaccination may be conducted and administered by our trained health personnel of the Ministry of Health in the RHUs at least.
One week before the expected date of departure under the supervision of the Integrated Provincial Health Offices of the respective province.
Baka pwede siya nilagay sa ilalim ng where as na amended ni MP Ali, Mr. Speaker?
May. Um, Mr. Speaker, pwede rin as much as practicable, uh, or may na lang? May, okay.
I agree, Mr. Speaker.
So what is the pleasure of your proponent? Do you accept?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
The proponent has ac- the, the proponent, the resolution has accepted the proposed amendment. Secretariat, take note. Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move to, uh, terminate the period of amendment.
Any objection? There being no objection, the, the period of amendment is now terminated.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve proposed resolution number 320, as amended and subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve proposed resolution number,
320.
320, as amended and subject to style. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Next is proposed resolution number 339.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Floor Leader.
Thank you. Next is proposed resolution number 339. May we request the secretariat to please read the title, the author, and the co-authors.
The secretariat is directed to read the title of proposed resolution number 339, including the name of the authors and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution Number 329, entitled Resolution to Conductive by the Attorney General in Age of Education Regarding Power, Distribution, and Electric Cooperation in Bangsa-Moro Region, and Address Related Issues.
Author: Palan Matalan Chapara Parawitay Matalan Co-authors: Members of Parliament, Lord Mustafa Loong Tawakan Mitimbang, Royal Indorso Baiwanay Aladaw, Aksa Usman, Maissa Ikar Michael Mitimbang, Father Ismael Hatimil Hasan Swarto Maludud Ali Swarimai Albakir Vakiri and Susanna Nettin.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer proposed resolution number 339 to the Committee and Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Energy.
There is a motion to refer proposed resolution number 339 to the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Energy. Hearing no objection or opposition, the motion is approved.
Next is proposed resolution number 359. May we request the secretariat, secretariat to please read the title, the authors, and the co-authors.
The secretariat is directed to read the title of proposed resolution number 359, including the name of the authors and authors.
Proposed Resolution Number 359, entitled Resolution Requesting of Special President to Conductive Investigation On the Irregularities During the 2023 Hajj Silvemages in the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia KSA 888 of Legislation. Authors: Palan Matalan, Tawakan Mitimbang, Bantang Batuad, Mastura Muhammad Kelly Altau, Pasir Utuk, Ujipal Ujip, Muspilal, Rade Susanna Nettin, Baylen Altau Michael Mitimbang, Siti Bahad, Mahali Oyo Kaden Sinoliling, Juriyung, Swarto Maludud, Royal Indorso Lalang Alitonyung, and Swarto Mariswai Co-author: Member of Parliament, Leary Aratna
Mr. Speaker, I move to treat proposed resolution number 359 as a simple resolution.
Any objection? The motion is approved. We will treat proposed. The motion is approved. We will treat proposed resolution number 359 as a simple resolution.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize MP Tawakal Mintimbang, the principal author.
The gentleman from Talayan Maginda, from Gindulungan Magindana is recognized.
Pwede rin sa taplo. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Au Jibillah, Iminas Saytani Rajim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, Iwabiinas Ta'in. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Chief Minister Alhaz Murad Ibrahim, Speaker Pangalian Balindong, Deputy Speaker, Floor Leaders, distinguished colleagues of this caucus body. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Speaker, I rise today on the matter of the recent 2023 Hajj pilgrimage issues encountered by our Pelo Bangsa Muro Muslims in the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia. Mr. Speaker, we all know that Hajj is the fifth pillar of Islam. It is required to all Muslim believers to perform it once in a lifetime. It is a physically demanding journey that every Muslim believer undertakes for a chance to wipe and cleanse past sins and start anew before Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Pilgrims seek to deepen their faith during the Hajj. Hajj cleanses the soul, bringing purity, hope, and renewal by strengthening the unity of all followers of Islam. The day of Arapat is considered one of the most important days, not just of Hajj, but of the Islamic calendar. Mount Mercy at Arapat was the scene of the Prophet Muhammad SAW's final sermon after making the 14.4 kilometers journey from Mina. Pilgrims spend the day here to pray. Mr. Speaker, to the NCMF, I am appealing to you as your brother in Islam to act on this matter. Your office was commissioned for our religious affairs. You are supposed to protect and uphold the condition of all pilgrims, not the one who avenge to the suffering. Mr. Speaker, I'm hoping that these issues or tragedies that happen serve as reminders and realizations to improve our services in the future Hajj activities. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala forgive us all of our shortcomings. Lastly, Mr. Speaker, I'm calling the Bangsa Muro Pilgrims Authority to act this time. This is an opportunity, opportune time to call on NCMF to collaborate with the BPA or Bangsa Muro Pilgrims Authority for all activities involving religious matter. On that note, Mr. Speaker, I'm calling my fellow members of parliament to support me in this resolution, calling the Office of the President to an investigation of the 2023 Hajj pilgrimage. Wabilah tau pik walidaya. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of interpolation.
The period of interpolation debate is now open.
May we recognize MP Jumbo Matalam.
The gentleman from Pagalungan Magindana is recognized.
Wassalamualaikum, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much, uh, uh, majority, Floor Leader.
Is the proponent open to more interpolation, Mr. Speaker?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, Nagcon lang ako, napatayo ako dito, Mr. Speaker. Because recently, this is napakalaking issue ngayon, no? Meron lang akong gustong katanungan, the rationale behind the resolution, Mr. Speaker. Uh, what is the intention of the resolution, Mr. Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you to my brother, uh, MP Matalam from Pagalungan Municipality. Unang-una, uh, itong resolution nito, from my point, gusto natin ito na it's reminders sa, uh, NCMF na itong yearly na ginagawa natin na Hajj, lalo na especially sa Bangsa Muro, uh, Muslim believers. Ginagawa natin, ginagawa nila yearly itong mga activities na, activities na to involving Hajj. Kaya gusto natin this time, na this time is a wake-up call to them. Na dapat ayusin nila ang mga activities na kinakandak nila during Hajj period. And, uh, I will read, I will read this, uh, uh, some whereas in the resolution. Whereas there is a need to prove into the NCMF management of the Muslim Filipino pilgrims during the 2023 Hajj pilgrimage in Saudi Arabia, Kingdom of Saudi Arabia, to assist their overall performance in respect to their mandated powers and functions. This includes the logistics, coordination efforts, tasking and monitoring assignment of the delegation of NCMF that should have ensured the success of the 2023 Hajj pilgrimage in Saudi Arabia, Kingdom, Kingdom of Saudi Arabia. Ito po 'yung isa sa nakalagay sa resolution natin, Mr. Speaker. Na kung saan gusto natin, hindi natin ginagawa ito para pahirapan ang NCMF. Ang gusto natin ay may tuwid nila 'yung mga shortcomings pagpupulang nila, Mr. Speaker. Pangalawa, Mr. Speaker, as an experience sa NCMF, during my time, 2018, ako po ay nagperform ng Hajj, pero sa kasamaang palat, Mr. Speaker, hindi po ako natuloy, hanggang airport lang. Kaya ang tao sa atsip ay si Hajj Airport. Kaya ito, Mr. Speaker, ginawa ko itong resolution nito. It's not for myself, pero paano 'yung mga Bangsa Muro Muslim na 10 years sila pinagipunan ang pagpunta nila sa Hajj para mapulfil 'yung one of the pillars ng Islam na makapunta sila doon sa sacred place in Saudi Arabia? Kaya ito, Mr. Speaker, I'm hoping that this august body will support this resolution. Hindi po ito personal, hindi po ito personal, pero ito is laban ng Bangsa Muro Muslim believers na maipakita na tama na ang ginagawa ng NCMF. Every year, ganito na lang ang ginagawa nila. Kaya ako, paano na lang kung gusto ko mag-Hajj? Matakot na lang ako, instead of fulfilling my duties as a good Muslim. Hindi natin mapulfil kasi 'yung galis ang madatnan natin doon dahil sa kagagawa ng kapwa nating Muslim believers. Tawaging ko silang Muslim believers because NCMF, anong ibig sa ibin ng NCMF, National Commission for Muslim Affairs. Kaya, Mr. Speaker, I hope the gentleman from Pagalungan, uh, surprise my answer.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, I feel the intention, Mr. Speaker, of the proponent. Uh, uh, tumayo lang ako dito, Mr. Speaker. Because of the resolution, Mr. Speaker. I am zeroing sa resolution. The title of the resolution, Mr. Speaker, states, "Requesting the Office of the President to conduct an investigation of the irregularities during the 2023 Hajj pilgrimage in the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia." Uh, Mr. Speaker, and it states also in aid of legislation, are we asking the Office of the President to conduct an investigation and report to us in aid of legislation? Mr. Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, yes. Uh, this resolution, we are calling the Office of the President to conduct an investigation because under the law, NCMF is under to the Office of the President. That's why I think, uh, we are, we are not forcing or pushing the Office of, Office of the President to conduct an investigation. But, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's up to them, you know, it's up to them kung gusto nila magconduct ng investigation. Kasi unang-una, uh, hindi na ito mapak, hindi na ito may tago, itong issue nito kasi widespread na, nakita nila 'yung doon sa mga picture doon. Alam mo, meron pa jan mga, mga video, meron pang mga supporting document jan. Kaya siguro, Mr. Speaker, uh, it's up to the Office of the President to act on this resolution. And also, Mr. President, I think the Office of the President can amend this, uh, resolution.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I, I feel the intention of the proponent, uh, and I think, uh, I will also intend my, uh, my, uh, on the period of amendments, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to, uh, please terminate the period of, move to terminate the period of interpolation.
Hearing no objection, the period of interpolation debate is now terminated.
I move to open the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker. MP Matalam.
The period of amendments is now open.
A one-minute suspension, the floor.
One-minute suspension is given to the gentleman from Pagalungan Magindana. One-minute suspension is given to the gentleman from Pagalungan Magindanao.
Lord Leader, what is your opinion? Mr. Speaker, uh, the parliamentary status is uh, we are in the period of amendments and MP Matanang wishes to introduce an amendment.
Yes, uh, the gentleman from Pagalungan Magindanao is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, yung kuwan lang, Mr. Speaker, tanggalin na lang natin, oh, nakalagay na, yung to look into the irregularities and then uh, yung in aid of legislation, tanggalin na lang natin. Uh, that's it, uh, Mr. Speaker. Is if the opponent will agree, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, accepted, Mr. Speaker. Secretaryat, please take note, the amendments have been accepted. Floor Leader, I think there are no more amendments. You cannot move for the termination of the period of amendment.
Mr. Speaker, I move to terminate the period of interrogation, of amendments, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to-
Okay, Mr. Speaker, there is another amendment, Mr. Speaker, courtesy of MP Andy Ali, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, uh, the gentleman from uh, Tawi, Province of Magi, uh, Tawi-Tawis is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, una po dun sa last ano, hindi ano resolved, resolved further na yata yan eh, eh, be it resolved, di ba dun sa last? Ay, okay, that should be resolved further. That should be resolved further.
The second resolved portion should be resolved further. The last, the last resolved, uh-
Resolved finally.
Portion is resolved finally.
But Mr. Speaker, no, I think, Mr. Speaker, because the original result will be deleted, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, okay, okay, we will-
So yung, yung amendment ko po, uh, resolved, ah, tinanggal na po yun ah, okay, okay po. At uh, tanggalin na po ang KSA, tanggalin na lang po ang KSA, yan, ganun lang po. Okay, and resolved further po, copy of this ru, of this resolution shall be furnished to the Office of the President.
Accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, thank you, uh, gentleman.
Secretaryat, the amendment has been accepted.
I now move to terminate the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? Hearing none, the period of amendment is now terminated.
I move to approve proposal-
Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, that's Deputy Speaker Tan.
The gentleman from Sulu is recognized.
Balikan lang po natin resolve, resolve ano yun? Yung last resolve, that this resolution will be furnished? Hindi ba be forwarded? Kasi nakadress na 'yung title mismo, resolution requesting the Office of the President. So, dito sa last resolve further, copy of this resolution should be forwarded?
Or do you mean with-
We take note, uh, we take note Deputy Speaker Tan. But since the period of amendment has now been terminated, we will just ask the floor leader to move for approval of this resolution, subject to style and your concern will be dealt with uh, by the secretary.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you, as it is now reflected, Mr. Speaker, I now move to approve proposed resolution 359, subject, as amended and subject to style.
There is a motion to approve proposed resolution number 359, as amended and subject to style. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, the next is proposed resolution number 361, but uh, in view of the request of its principal author, MP Kalik Haji Abdullah, to defer the same, I therefore move to defer, um, consideration of this proposed resolution, Mr. Speaker.
The, the, uh, proposed resolution number 361, its consideration is now being deferred to a further date?
Yes.
Without any fixed date?
No fixed date yet, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? Has been seconded, hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
The final resolution, Mr. Speaker, is proposed resolution number 367. May we request the secretary react to please read the title of the authors and the co-authors?
The secretary is directed to read the title of proposed resolution number 367, including the name of the authors and co-authors.
Proposed resolution number 367, titled, resolution expressing gratitude to President Ferdinand Bombong Romualdes Marcos Jr. For his commitment to grant amnesty to former MILF, MNLF combatants, and for his recognition of MARM's performance. Authors, the most prominent, Baylen, Matawil, Mary, and another. Co-authors, the most prominent, Daniel, Arid, Junior, Jobari, Suwali, and Long Wahas, and Akmad Abbas. Swat, towards my town, Kalantimbang, and Los Barakas, and Susana, and Yatine, and Chan, Rayha, and Mama Alde.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we read proposed resolution number 367 as a simple resolution, Mr. Speaker.
Has been seconded, hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
May we request and recognize principal author, MP Baylen Matawil, Mr. Speaker.
The lady from Potabatosi is recognized.
Thank you very much. Honorable members of the Bangsa Moro Parliament, esteemed guests and fellow advocates of peace, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu. Once again, I am here with a heart full of gratitude and hope as we gather here to discuss a resolution of utmost significance to our beloved Bangsa Moro region. In the spirit of unity and progress, I bring before this honorable Assembly parliamentary resolution number 6367, expressing our deep appreciation to President Ferdinand Bombong Romualdes Marcos Jr. For his commitment to grant amnesty to former combatants of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, MILF, and Moro National Liberation Front, MNLF. In his recent State of the Nation address, or Sona, President Marcos laid out a vision that resonates with our shared aspirations, a vision of the united Philippines, moving forward hand in hand towards peace and development. His acknowledgement of the evolution of armed struggle to our fellow Filipinos reflects an understanding of the complexities we face in our pursuit of lasting peace. The promise of granting amnesty to former combatants is not merely a legislative matter. It is a symbol of reconciliation and healing. It is a testament to our government's unwavering commitment to address the root causes of conflict and to provide an opportunity for those who once carried arms to rejoin society as agents of peace. As member of the Bangsa Moro Parliament, it is our duty to support and uphold this resolution. Granting amnesty to former combatants is a critical confidence building measure in the normalization track of the peace process. By doing so, we pave the way for trust and confidence to flourish among all segments of the process, including decommissioning and others. Furthermore, President Marcos' recognition of MARM's performance and the collaborative efforts of all key groups is a testament of our resilience and unity. Through cooperation and consultation, we have successfully achieved a peaceful and effective transition, proving that former adversaries can become partners in peace. Our gratitude to President Marcos is not only a gesture of appreciation, but also a commitment to working hand in hand with the national government towards a shared vision of lasting peace in the Bangsa Moro region. We must continue to strengthen the bonds of unity, leaving behind the wounds of the past and forging a future anchored on cooperation, progress, and prosperity. As we did, as we deliberate on this resolution, let us remember that our actions today will shape the future of our region and the lives of our people. Let us rise above political affiliations and stand united in support of the peace process. Together, let us send a clear message of solidarity reflecting the will of the Bangsa Moro people to embrace peace and reconciliation. I urge each and every one of you, my esteemed colleagues in this Bangsa Moro Parliament, to lend your wholehearted support to this resolution. Let us demonstrate our commitment to peace and progress and extend our appreciation to President Marcos for his unwavering dedication to the well-being of the Bangsa Moro people. May this resolution serve as a beacon of hope and a testament to the strength of our unity as we continue to build a peaceful and prosperous future of the Bangsa Moro region. Thank you, and may we deliberate with wisdom, compassion, and shared commitment to the betterment of our beloved homeland. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu.
Mr. Speaker, there appears to be, uh, okay, so is it, um, just a manifestation, Mr. Speaker, may we recognize Deputy Speaker Hassan?
The deputy speaker is recognized, the gentleman from Batilan is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I'd just like to recall when we do say that the 1996 final disagreement. When I came into the, discuss, when we discussed about amnesty, the MNLF during that time objected because they interpret amnesty in a layman language. Meaning if you are given amnesty, that you committed crimes. It just because of that, the MNLF agreed with Philippine government that there was no winners, no losers, and there was stalemate between the MNLF and the Philippine government. However, when you implemented the agreement, we had some problem because the law enforcement went after some of our members, some of the MNLF members who committed, uh, to the, to them, uh, crime, uh, crimes, including fighting between the MNLF forces and the armed forces of the Philippines. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I would like to manifest my support of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leader?
Uh, may we recognize MP Ramos and then MP Ali to manifest their support, Mr. Speaker?
Are there no interpolators? The lady from Lalo, her shoe is recognized.
And also from Kabutanan Magindanao, MP K SGA. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu. Um, una gusto ko pong magpasalamat sa offer ng resolution nito na nagpapahiya ng pasasalamat sa ating pangulong Ferdinand Bombong Marcos. Tayo po ay tausgusong napapahiya ng ating pasasalamat at suporta sa resu, sa kanyang nais na ibigay na amnistiya sa mga, uh, returnees. Kasama na dito ang mga combatants, uh, pagka sa Moro National Liberation Front at Moro Islamic Liberation Front. Naniniwada po tayo na ang amnistiya nito ay isang palaking hakbang para sa mabilis at tuluyan pagbabalik sa lipunan ng mga dating combatants at magiging dan po para sa kapayapaan at kaaisan sa ating mayaw. Conflict has been a longstanding issue in the country at the proposed resolution 327 na inahain sa ating palyamento ay nagpapahiya ng ating tausgusong pasasalamat kay Pangulong Marcos para sa kanyang ibigasyon at pangako na makamit ang panmatagalang kapayapaan at kontraraan. Hindi labang sa Bangsa Moro, hindi maging sa buong bansa. Noway patuloy po natin suportahan ang mga polisiya at paglabang pangkapayapaan. Maraming salamat Pangulong Marcos, mabuhay po kayo at maraming salamat yung po sa proposed nito resolution. With that, Mr. Speaker, I would like to be associated with this proposed resolution.
Floor Leader?
MP Ali, uh, wishes to manifest his support.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I just would like to manifest that all members of the parliament who are present, both zoom and physically present, be authors of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Secretaryat, take note.
Mr. Speaker, while there are no interpolators, um, and then I move to, uh, dispense with the period of interrogation, but I wish to move to open the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
The floor leader has moved for the, uh, to dispense with the period of interrogation debate and to proceed with the period of amendment. Any second? Hearing no objection, we will proceed with the period of amendment.
May we recognize MP Abdullah Hashim, Mr. Speaker?
The gentleman from Pagalungan Magindanao is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, in the interest of time, Mr. Speaker, I will just, uh, uh, go directly to my amendment. Um, in the, uh, title, uh, it is referred that, uh, to grant amnesty to former MILF, uh, MNLF combatants. Now, uh, to be more inclusive and to include, uh, all members of these, the aforementioned groups, uh, we would just simply change combatants into members as, as well as, uh, any mention in the body of the resolution, uh, Mr. Speaker.
I ac, I accept the proposal, Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leader?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, I think it's just a matter of style, the rest of the, uh, changes would be a matter of style. So I move to terminate the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? Is that an objection to the motion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, um, I said that it's just a matter of style, you furthermore, chaka finally. So we will just, um, dispense with it if that's okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Juily noted from the floor leader. There being no more objection, the period of amendment is now terminated.
Mr. Speaker?
That's Deputy Speaker Tan.
Mr. Speaker, yes, uh, the gentleman from Sulu is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, the title, can we go back to the title? Hindi ba dalawang title, dalawang subject material, Mr. Speaker? And for his recognition of MARM's performance, separate yung hindi ang connected san, amnesty, grant of amnesty. I think the title should only express one subject matter, should only include one subject matter.
I think, uh, this, this refers to the speech, the whole speech of the president. I think this, uh, what we are dealing here is the, the, the one act of the president of granting, uh, of extending amnesty and commending the performance of MARM. This is not about, uh, the two subject matters, but the act of the president during the speech.
Yes, but, uh, the, the, during the speech, but the resolution uh, expressed gratitude to President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos for his commitment to grant amnesty, that's one subject matter. And for his recognition- And for his recognition of BARB's performance is another subject matter. Which does not include only the...
We will hear from the proponent. We will hear from the proponent.
Mr. Speaker, there is a correlation since that is one subject. It is from the sona of President Marcos. The expression of gratitude to granting the proclamation for amnesty are one and the same. Because we are happy, we are grateful for the president for granting the amnesty. So this is not about only amnesty alone. Our gratitude to the president for that matter.
Therefore, in the title, there should therefore be a reference to this sona. So we will ask the floor, any further comment, Deputy Speaker time.
Here lang, I have serious doubt on that title.
Maybe we can say na as expressed in his sona or as stated in the State of the Nation address.
You can delete the recognition of BARB's performance and only focus on the grant of amnesty.
What would you say if we will just put a reference there on the sona? So that both subject matters, both matters can be dealt within the title.
Madam, Mr. Speaker, I will stick to the title.
Mr. Speaker, can we modify it to say expressing gratitude to President Ferdinand Bonggo Marcos for mentioning his commitment to grant amnesty and his recognition of BARB's performance, Mr. Speaker? During the sona 2020.
I think that would just excuse us from the two subject matter rule. And I think you should delete the word "for" after the end. So I think that should allow us to circumvent the two subject matter rule. There is now a motion to...
If I did delete the end, after members.
There is now pending motion to terminate the period of amendment. It's been seconded, the period of amendment is now terminated.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve.
Okay, Mr. Speaker, but it check na lang the title of it.
Yes, we will, I think that would be covered in the motion to approve subject to style.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve proposed Resolution Number 367 as amended and subject to style and further enhancement of the title, Mr. Speaker.
There is now a motion to approve the proposed resolution as amended and subject to style. It has been seconded, there being no objection, the motion is approved.
We come to the final part, Mr. Speaker, on the order of business, which is unfinished business on committee report number 23 regarding BTA Parliament Bill Number 37 entitled an Act establishing the Bangsa-Moro Science High School System, providing funds therefore and for other purposes. Mr. Speaker, let me inform the body that the parliamentary status of this committee report is on the period of amendments, Mr. Speaker. So may we request the Committee on Science and Technology Chair and P. Sohar to Esmael to take the floor.
The Chair of the Committee on Science and Technology now has the floor. Those who have submitted proposed amendment, you may now rise and be recognized.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Actually, we already have a matrix of the proposed amendments of the our fully MPs. And we are very thankful. Nagpapasalamat kami sa committee na sa lahat ng mga inputs ng mga kasamaan natin for the improvement of this bill. And we hope na after this, makita natin na mas ma-enhance palalo 'yung ating proposed bill. So according to this matrix, Mr. Speaker, we have several amendments. And starting from the Article 1, Preliminary Provision. So there is an amendment from MP Bayintan to remove the preliminaries into general provision. So with that, Mr. Speaker, we accept that amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary, take note.
Section 2, we also have amendment from MP Delangal and changing the word "confirm" to "conform", and we accept that, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary, take note.
And, Mr. Speaker, meron din po tayong amendment from MP Ampatuan and MP Anapasman. And but of course, we have a counterproposal, Mr. Speaker. States that Section 2 Declaration of Policy, it is... Is it the... It is, it should be "it is". It is a declaration of policy. It is the declared policy of the Bangsa-Moro government to establish, maintain, and support a complete and integrated system of quality education which shall be a system of the national education system and shall conform to the standards set by the national government. For this purpose, the Bangsa-Moro government shall develop an educational framework relevant and responsive to the needs, ideals, and aspirations of the Bangsa-Moro people. Moreover, the Bangsa-Moro government recognizes science and technology to be essential to national and regional progress. Thus, the Bangsa-Moro government shall give priority to science, research, and development, inventions, innovations, and technological advancement and development. Thus, it shall maintain and support a comprehensive, adequate, and integrated high school science education system tailored to the needs of learners in the Bangsa-Moro. So that is our counterproposal since the proponents... MP Basman is in the room and MP Ampatuan.
You have no... I think if the proponent has a counterproposal, it is now said that you do not accept the proposal of the proponent.
Yes, that's it, Mr. Speaker. So that is the wordings that we want from the...
And your counterproposal shall prevail in this.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for that enlightenment.
I think that would be a matter of... Yeah. They lose their opportunity to question your counterproposal.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Next, since walang response, so maybe... Yeah, I assume it's already accepted and agreed. Then, Mr. Speaker, meron din po tayo dito amendment from MP Ampatuan. So, nagchange po siya ng Article, nagtagtag po siya ng Article 2, definition of terms, creation, and objectives of the Bangsa-Moro Science VSH system. It says here, Mr. Speaker... Yes, we accept the changes, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary, take note.
Wait then. Mr. Speaker, one minute.
Session is suspended for one minute. Session resume.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, can we move forward and then we will just refer back on this...
Particular...
Section 3, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we will move forward, part that section.
Okay. Actually, our concern, Mr. Speaker, only on the definition of the Bangsa-Moro Science High School because there are two proposed amendments. But we can proceed on the definition of the science, technology, and values, Mr. Speaker. And, Mr. Speaker, we accept the amendment of MP Ampatuan on the definition integrating... No, sa baba po. Sa baba, sa baba pa. Then, na sa letter B, adding refers to, dun sa science, we accept that, Mr. Speaker.
Whose amendment is that?
Ampatuan, MP Ampatuan.
So you accept MP Ampatuan's amendment?
Yes.
Secretary, take note, Ampatuan amendment on Section 3?
Yes, wala ng ibang amendment of this, Mr. Speaker, only Ampatuan. But to sa definition ng Science High School, there are two amendments, Mr. Speaker. But I'll just maybe say that later on, Mr. Speaker.
Okay.
Then we also accept the amendment on the definition of the technology, Mr. Speaker, the same time on the letter D, values education.
Okay. Secretary, take note.
And, sa baba pa po. Okay, next, Mr. Speaker, again, this is a amendment from MP Ampatuan. All the amendment for enhancement of this provision, Mr. Speaker, are all accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary, take note.
Section 3, actually, meron ang changes maybe on the number kasi meron ang mga addition dito. Subject to style na lang po 'yung numberings po ng section natin. Then on Section 5, Mr. Speaker, this is new provision, the objective, and I think we admit that we missed to include the objective of this bill. So, Mr. Speaker, we accept this amendment from MP Ampatuan, Mr. Speaker. We accept. Then, there is also an amendment for this Article 3 structure of the Bangsa-Moro Science High School System, and we accept that, Mr. Speaker. Then, structure of the Bangsa-Moro Science High School System. This is also amendment from MP Bayintan, and it's also, we also accept this, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary, take note.
So next, Mr. Speaker.
What section?
Nasa ku na po tayo, sa Section 7, Board of Trustees. Actually, Mr. Speaker, on letter D, meron pong amendment...
Now take note, Secretary, Section 6 becomes Section 7 now on this amendment.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. And, Mr. Speaker, dito sa Section 7 po, merong amendment po tayo na gawing executive director po 'yung members ng Board of Trustees instead of the campus director. Mr. Speaker, we do not accept this, Mr. Speaker. Instead, we have a counterproposal. On the right side, Mr. Speaker, it says the campus director of the Bangsa-Moro Science High School System. That is, that should be the member of the Board of Trustees. Or should Executive Committee already have an executive director, such executive director? So meaning, kapag nagkaroon na po ng Executive Committee, which is composed of campus directors, magkakaroon po ito ng executive director. At saka siya po 'yung magiging member na po ng committee.
Secretary, take note, the proponent did not accept the proposed amendment and instead made a counterproposal.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, letter F, there is also amendment. Minibalang po siyang the chairperson of the committee and the technology of the Bangsa-Moro Parliament. And we accept that, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary, take note, accepted.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, there is also amendment from MP Basman, one representative from the private sector. But, Mr. Speaker, we have a counterproposal. Instead of one, we propose to make it two representatives, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary, take note, the proponent did not accept the proposed amendment and instead made a counterproposal.
Yes, then, Mr. Speaker, 'yung letter I, palitan po siya ng... Yes, 'yung letter I is gawin po siyang from Muslim religious leaders, papalitan po siya ng... No. The amendment is the move T of the Bangsa-Moro Darulinta, and we accept that, Mr. Speaker. Under the amendment of MP Basman, Mr. Speaker. Sa baba po, sa baba po. We accept that, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary, take note, the amendment of MP Basman is accepted.
And, Mr. Speaker, meron po...
Letter I, letter I.
There is also proposal to remove the executive director of the PISI. Yes, we accept that, that should be necessary, that the director of the PISI will be a member of the Board of Trustees ng Bangsa-Moro Science High School. So we accept that, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary, take note.
Mr. Speaker, on the Section 8, palitan lang po 'yung letter B. Mr. Speaker, on the Section 8, palitan lang po 'yung letter B, nagkitaless lang po 'yung Board and Trustees, and we accept that, Mr. Speaker.
Section 7 becomes Section 8.
Amendment on letter H, Mr. Speaker, we accept it, Mr. Speaker. Sa baba. Letter H, we accept that, Mr. Speaker. And also... The Section I, Mr. Speaker, we also accept that, Mr. Speaker. Yes, all the sections, 'yung amendment po dito sa section 2, we all accept, Mr. Speaker. And Section Number 6, Mr. Speaker, we also accept the amendment on Section Number 9.
Section 8 becomes Section 9. Amendment accepted.
Then on Section Number 10, which is replacing the Executive Committee into Executive Director, Mr. Speaker, unfortunately, we do not accept this amendment, Mr. Speaker. But instead, we have a counterproposal on the right side, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary, the proposed amendment has been rejected, and there is a counterproposal. Take note.
Yes, can you? So, 'yan na po 'yung additional dun sa kabila, Mr. Speaker. The Executive Committee shall be composed of all Campus Directors of the system and headed by the Executive Director, who shall be appointed by the Board of Trustees, provided that while the system has only one campus, the Campus Director, the Head of the Department in each campus, and other ranking faculty members or officials of the campus as identified by the Campus Director shall compose of the Executive Committee. In such a case, the Campus Director shall head of the Executive Committee.
We will proceed with the next amendment.
Yes, Section Number 11, Mr. Speaker. So, minor lang po 'yung letter D. So we accept that, Mr. Speaker. So minimal amendment. Then, Mr. Speaker... So, Article Number 4, administrative, so that is also an amendment, so we accept that, Mr. Speaker.
What article? Article 4.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Speaker, actually, these two amendments are almost similar. So, since we accept the amendment of MP Ampatuan, which is... Pag-invert lang po ng D, and very minimal. And can please apply that amendment dun sa amendment ni MP Basman. Hindi lang po na naginang counter. Papalit na lang po yun sa kay Basman.
One minute suspension.
Session resume.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, again, I just want to elaborate again, I mean, repeat, we do not accept the amendment of MP Ampatuan. Instead, we accept the amendment of MP Basman, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary, take note on what section?
Section 12.
Section 12, Basman Amendment is accepted, not the Ampatuan Amendment.
Yes, the next amendment, Mr. Speakers, is on... We do not accept the amendment from MP Ampatuan. Instead, we accept the amendment from MP Basman.
Secretary, take note.
Yes, next. Yes, the same, Mr. Speaker, we do not accept the amendment from MP Ampatuan, we accept the amendment from MP Basman. Next, Mr. Speaker, this is amendment from MP Ramos, Mr. Speaker. I believe this should be part of the IRR, Mr. Speaker. So, we do not accept. But we make sure, Mr. Speaker, that this provision or this amendment, we will forward it to the... Yes, the MOSP to include it in the IRR, Mr. Speaker. So we do not accept. The next, Mr. Speaker, is the gender equity and inclusivity. We accept this, Mr. Speaker. Next, Mr. Speaker, this is also amendment from MP Ramos. We have a counterproposal, Mr. Speaker. It says Section 6... Section 16. The transparency and accountability mechanism. The Bangsa-Moro Science High School system shall adhere to the usual government transparency and accountability measures. It shall likewise implement feedback and grievance mechanism that would allow students, faculty, staff, and other stakeholders to raise concerns, report misconduct, and seek resolution of issues in a fair, confidential manner. So, we do not accept the amendment, Mr. Speaker. Instead, we have a counteramendment. Then lastly, Mr. Speaker, on Section 16, we accept the amendment, Mr. Speaker. That would be all.
Secretary, take note. Floor Leader, I believe there are no more proposed amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We would like to continue the period of amendments tomorrow after the clean copy of the amendments as approved today. Mr. Speaker, I think there was one portion that was parked earlier, the definition of Bangsa-Moro Science High School system, is that it?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. And upon reading it, Mr. Speaker, we accept the amendment of MP Basman, MP Basman, Mr. Speaker, on the definition of terms.
Secretary, take note.
'Yung letter A po. Mr. Speaker, so may we request the committee, Secretary, to please produce clean copies of the bill as amended today so that we can take a look tomorrow, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. There is a motion now to not to close the period, to continue the period of amendments tomorrow. Unless there is an objection, we will continue the period of amendment tomorrow.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other agenda in order, please, I move to adjourn, Mr. Speaker. Until 1:00 PM tomorrow.
Session is adjourned until 1 o'clock PM tomorrow afternoon.